Okay.
Whoever's typing may want to mute. I just want to say someone's typing furiously. You want to mute?
Gail, did you find the memo?
I did. If you give me 30 more seconds, I can post it or I can just email it to everyone. Let me just do that right now. I'm going to send that right away and then. All right, so the board is going to get this right now, but I will post it in a moment. All right. So everybody should be receiving it soon. I hope. Well, I'm going to send them the memo because it's not going as fast as I would like together. And to Cabinet. All right, you should be receiving that now and then I will post it.
Okay. Okay, we're ready when everybody else is.
I'm ready, so if you want to start, go ahead.
Jackie?
Yes.
She says she's ready.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did not hear her. Okay. What am I doing? I called to order the committee of the whole meeting on April 14th at 6:37 PM, 6:42, excuse me, PM, and asked for a roll call.
Mr. Kowski?
Here.
Ms. Bybee?
Here.
Mr. Baron?
Here.
Mr. Isley?
Yes.
Mr. Marteri? Ms. Harris?
Here.
And Dr. Moore?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, move for approval of the minutes of March 10th, 2020, and ask for a second.
Second.
Was that Mr. Baron?
Yes, I believe I got it by your nose.
Thank you very much.
All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Okay. I'll turn it over to Dr. Pruitt Adams.
We have to do visitors' comments.
I did not receive any comments electronically. I don't know if anything has come in after the deadline.
Okay. Then I will proceed with the instruction section. So the first item under instruction is being presented by Linda Parker, Director of Student Services, Janelle Bishop, Lee Dean, and Greg Johnson, Associate Superintendent, is the Student Intervention Program Evaluation. In the fall of 2019, as you know, we represented a shift in our approach to student discipline. The presentation tonight is a three-part progression that will be presented to the board in May. The board has an attached document tied called Discipline Practices 2019-2020 Semester One. This report is in compliance with Priority Two Transformative Ed of the Strategic Plan and Board Policy 6:40.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Dr. Pruitt Adams. Before I turn this over to Linda Parker and Janelle Bishop to lead us through the presentation, I want to add just a little bit by way of introduction to state that I really would like the board, I think we would all like the board, to see this as the second part of a three-part progression as we are moving towards more restorative practices at OPRF. So if you all recall, last October, Linda Parker presented the kind of outlook for the year highlighted by our contract and partnership with EMOJA throughout this past school year. That has culminated in a series of trainings throughout the school year as well as a shift in how we have approached our behavioral interventions for our students. And you're going to see that highlighted in the presentation this evening. But again, this is really the first step towards our systemic kind of rethinking of how we are going about educating our students for behavior at OPRF. The third part, now the third part of this kind of three-part presentation series is going to be the presentation of our new revised Code of Conduct, which will be coming to the board later this spring. So with that kind of backdrop, to give us some context, I'm going to turn it over to Linda Parker and Janelle Bishop.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Hi.
So as you saw from the report that was sent, we split up our presentation into four parts. And I think I want to highlight what Greg just said in terms of the educating our students where it comes to discipline because restorative practice work actually focuses on that, the education of students so that we can reshape behavior. And we want to make sure that we are doing that as we pay attention to the different things we're trying to accomplish with our program. So we started with a review of the program and then we had to look at an essential question we wanted to answer if we were going to be on that page for restorative practices. And then we had to pull our data to see what we were seeing in terms of the facts of what was happening within our building, analyze it for what it was telling us, and then understand what we needed to do in order to move forward. So that's pretty much the format of what we're doing, and so we'll just go right into it. Next, Chris. So our program overview is first, and Janelle is going to start with that. Thank you. Janelle, I think you're muted. I can't hear you. I see you talking, but I can't hear you.
I'm looking to see if I can. Sorry, sorry. My screen has been freezing on and off today, so forgive me if that happens. So hi, everybody, and I want to just forewarn while I did try to have my children be in another part of the house. It has not worked all the time, so you may hear them. So this year, we tried to really address our practice in terms of being in line with Senate Bill 100. While it has been out for a few years, each year we have needed to grow in aligning our practices. Our current Code of Conduct still lends itself to more punitive responses to discipline infractions. And I think some of you have heard me talk about that before, and so we have sought to really work through that with the current Code of Conduct, but also be more restorative in our practices and change thinking around what is appropriate in response to discipline issues. And you'll see in the program focus slide about challenging the unsupported ideology about the necessity of punitive consequences for certain behaviors. And so we worked really hard. We met with our attorneys to get some guidance on really aligning our practices with the law. If you all recall, hopefully you do, Senate Bill 100 is in place to be less punitive and more restorative when it comes to discipline practices.
Okay, next. So imagine in this work, when Janelle is speaking about our discussion with our school attorneys, we started with myself and deans actually trying to make sure that we were aligned with Senate Bill 100 and where we were not, to find out what we needed to do to become so, which we found out meant having some universal mindset shifts that were necessary because everyone views disciplinary action differently in terms of what they think is right and what they think is necessary for certain infractions as they occur. We also worked this year with the EMOJA Corporation in different trainings to become more fluid in our restorative practices. It's not that they didn't exist before, but there were definitely some means of improving and increasing what we were doing in order to make sure that students had a, just that they were being considered as a total student as they were coming through the process and not just focusing on the way discipline has looked and what the Code of Conduct would allow to have happened as we were going through that. So we were shifting from old practices and trying to lift some thoughts and practices with some mind shift changes. Next. So with Senate Bill 100, there were some guiding questions, and it's a three-pronged question that we found out is necessary to examine before you consider any exclusion of a student from their learning environment. And that's what we really had to do in terms of framing our thinking, understanding that suspensions of any kind, in school or out of school, means that we are removing a student from their free and public education for that time. And so the question becomes, what should be an indicator for that happening? So when you see this here, this was the guiding question the attorneys had us examine when we're looking at any type of disciplinary infraction that may come our way, examining what a student.
That may result in an out-of-school suspension.
In an out-of-school suspension, excluding them. So this is for excluding them from their learning environment. Would the student's continuing presence pose any of those three things that you see listed there? Okay, and then not only do you have to examine this as a question, you also have to look at what the student's history is and understand what other appropriate and available interventions were considered before a severe consequence has been considered. So this is the guiding thought that goes into everything now as we're considering an out-of-school suspension or excluding, and even in school when we're thinking about pulling them from their learning environment due to an infraction. Next. So that led us to our guiding question. So since we are working on our strategic plan for our supportive learning environment and we're trying to create that, how has the focus on creating a culture of warmth and the use of more restorative practices had an impact on our discipline data? Because that is what we've been working on this year, and we wanted to see how has that made a difference in our numbers? So that's the data that we're going into. Next. And then next, Chris. So these are the various data points that you're going to see on the coming slide. Because you received this presentation in advance, I wanted you to understand what each of the slides were going to represent. So this is just an explanation of what is recorded in the slides that we're about to go through. I won't read them all because I know everyone had a chance to look at them, but that is an identifier if you were, as we go into questions too later, in terms of what data you will see as we go through this presentation. And then next, okay, and then Janelle, I'll start this and then we go through. So the first is our infractions by type and race. Notice that in every slide, as where we have the data to show you, we're giving you last year's data in comparison to this year's data. And I wanted to let you know in this slide, you are going to see for the only time the one line that is recorded as attendance/detention. The reason we pulled this out of this column, out of the next set of slides you're going to see is because this represents our failure to serve information and it reports solely on detentions and tardies to school. And because it ends up each year being our highest number and highest percentage of infraction, we pulled that out because it kind of skews the data, and in all actuality, it is a conversation all on its own in terms of what we want to do when it comes to tardiness to school. But we didn't want that to color all the other things we wanted to look at, so after this slide, it is pulled out. And Janelle is going to speak to you about the difference in the percentages from this year to last year.
The significant one that stood out was the Level 1. Where am I? Sorry. The FTS numbers. So if you see from the fall of 2019, the fall of 2018, that there was a pretty significant drop in the number from 2,077 to 839. And we just wanted to explain that pretty significant drop, and that is, as everyone knows, we have what's called a HERO tardy system where students have to scan into a security person and get a tardy slip when they are late to class. And we've kind of worked through this as the years have progressed and made changes. I think every year, as we go through and review things, and so in the effort and the spirit to be less punitive, we changed the threshold at which a student would get a punitive consequence in the form of a detention. So it used to be at the fifth tardy, students would get a detention. Now they don't get that detention until the 10th. It, warnings are issued along the way up until the 10th. We also gave students a fresh start at the start of every quarter, and that used to be at the start of every semester. So once you reach 10, you start getting detentions and Saturday detentions and that kind of thing. And so we slowed down the progression of that, which is why that number in particular is so different.
You'll also notice in the next column that in fall of 2018, there were very few interventions that were logged. And then this year, we have 3%. That intervention column is representative of intervention prevention. And those was an initiative that was being tried this year with the deans in terms of working with students instead of doing punitive action on things like going out of a unsupervised door that they weren't supposed to go through, a way of having conversations with students instead of putting them into a registered infraction with a level charge against it. So as you look at this slide as well, you'll see the count for all infractions there that represent our 100%. And so we want you to see that the total number of infractions, if you also include the attendance/detention, were 1,382 for this school year in comparison to the 2448 from last year. And keeping in mind what Janelle mentioned in terms of the FTS, failure to serve with the detention. Do note that we are looking to replace the HERO system. We are currently investigating what would be best in order to serve our students, but also lessen the number of tardies to school and to class as well. Next. Okay, so what we see here on this slide is the students by highest level of infraction. Very important when we're looking at this to explain the differences in terms of what we're seeing from fall 2019, and I want you all to be able to look at fall 2019 on the slide because I know there's another number that's blocking it a little bit on the handout you were given, but I'll explain that why. If you look at the percentages, once we took out the attendance due to detention, notice the percentage rates in terms of the different categories for the Level 1s, 2s, and 3s along with the interventions that added, and there was something that we noticed here. We have 216 students within our school of our 3,464 students that actually received or had a disciplinary infraction, and that represented 6.23% of our school. Okay, in terms of that number. What does that mean? Next. That means that 93.7% of our students within our entire high school have never had, at least for first semester. least for first semester of fall of 2019, a behavioral infraction. When we look at numbers just compared within our high school contingent and then also just high schools in general, considering the number of students who pass through our doors and are in our hallways, this is something that we didn't want to, to miss out on celebrating. That is a, that's huge in terms of the amount of students who actually are able to go through their experience at our high school and not have a disciplinary infraction at all. We will break down more in terms of the numbers as we go through, but we wanted to take a moment to at least look at that, celebrate that and understand as we're trying to move our percentages down. Consider exactly how much we would be thinking we could move that number of 6.23%, given that we know that it's possibly impossible to get to a 0%. Okay? As we go through. Next. So this slide is specific speaks of recidivism. Janelle, did you want to go through this? I think she might be frozen. Okay, that's okay. So in this one, as we're looking, this is a slide that is commenting on the number of students who have multiple infractions and have passed through our system more than one time. As you can see for this school year, 172 students only had one infraction. And then students who had two, three, or more than three are listed next to that. But most of our students do not repeat and come through our disciplinary system after the first time. So of that 6% that do pass through, most are just one-time offenders. I hate to say that, I'm sorry, but one-time visitors into that system. Next slide.
Linda, I can go ahead if you want me to.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you hear me? Okay. The next is our infractions just by response. And this is, these are our reactions or responses to discipline infractions by level. The increase in what we will talk about pertains to restorative practices speaks to the, the genuine efforts that we have been making to replace punitive responses with more restorative responses. It also speaks to better recording and documenting of the restorative responses. I would like to, having been doing this job for quite a long time, we didn't just start doing restorative actions this year, but we have been working really hard to better document that and it is still a work in progress. But there are other, when I spoke earlier in the beginning about changing mindsets, about how we should be reacting to certain discipline infractions, I can say that we have replaced some with some punitive responses with more restorative actions. I, I can personally speak to incidents where I know that we would have reacted a more punitive way in previous years and we replaced with another kind of more restorative response. And so I think that we will see that number continue to grow over the years, one, as we get, get better documenting them and also improving our practice.
And then if you notice in columns where it says seven ISS and you look at where it says level three, so there are 111 ISSs that were assigned for this school year in comparison to 81 before. So I'm just highlighting what Janelle is saying, that things that may have resulted in past years in out of school consequences actually showed up in, in school and most probably with less days of doing so. So I just wanted to see, show you where that was reflected in our number. You also see level twos down and level ones down for ISS as well. Next. And then this slide breaks down the number of days that were served as ISS and OSS. We noticed here that our data remained pretty flat as a total, but if you look in the different categories and at the severity, like 10 days, you'll notice there's a drop in number there. Where there is an increase with five days, there's no seven day here. And then the five days are pretty flat to what they were before. So it's a comparison just to see exactly where these days are being served and how many are being served by students who are assigned an ISS and an OSS. I do want to also point out that where I'm saying ISS, which is our in-school suspension, we actually restructured our ISS this year and it really goes by the name ISR, which is our in-school
Reflections.
Reflection, thank you. Our in-school reflection room. The individuals who are in that room now, it is not just a place where students just sit and do work that's given to them from their teachers. There is time for them to do that, but these two individuals have built in time where they do reflection with the students on why they are there. Sometimes they get students who are, are very not happy to be in that space and they work with them from the moment that they sit in their chair to find out if they understand why they are there, how to make sure that they have ownership of why they are there, and then working on how we make sure that this doesn't happen again and that we're not in this system. The one thing I think is also to be highlighted is at the end of a student's time at ISR, they do follow-up with the students within the week to make sure that those students who were in there know that they're caring about what is happening with them as they reintegrate into the school environment. And this has been very popular amongst the students, even to the point where they've had to say like, you can't just, you know, stay in here to visit. You have to go out like, and you're not to come back just to visit. So the students have reported to really connecting with those individuals and appreciating that they show that they cared even after they had gone from that space. And even during this time of electronic learning and remote learning, those individuals are reaching out to the students who had been in their environments throughout the year, just to check on them and see how they're doing on this time that they're at home. And motive, you know, just encouraging them to stay connected and stay involved with their schoolwork as we go through this experience. Next. So for this particular slide, there was no data of this kind that was recorded from last year. And as Janelle had mentioned, that was something, not to say that none of this happened, but it was not a, a priority to make sure that it was recorded. We've done a better job of making sure that we are recording what those interventions and interactions have been. But then this is also what has happened throughout the building where the deans have been in contact with teachers, in contact with teacher, students, parents, mediation, restorative conversation, teacher conferences, verbal warning, a dean's conference. All of these happened in place of another consequence that would have happened in past years. So we wanted to just show you in terms of the numbers of this happening. And I want you to understand in terms of what these conversations are looking like. Students have to, within restorative practice work, they have to understand and own what their part is in the process of harming another individual or themselves or whatever they have done to get a disciplinary action with a dean. And so that conversation is to help students to understand that we're, we're not here to just punish you. We're trying to get you to understand exactly why, you know, what the behavior was, why it is calling for this level of attention. And then what can we do and what can you do in order to turn things around and not be in this space again? I think a key thing to mention here too, is that a lot of times I find myself on the end of trying, especially if it's like confrontation between teacher, student or student, student, trying to get students to understand the value of a restorative conversation when there has been conflict. A lot of students choose, like they don't want to have a conversation with someone who is aggressed upon them and that's completely understandable. We try to get them to the point that there is a way for them to have a conversation where the person who felt aggressed upon can explain to the aggressor the harm that was caused when they did that act, which has powerful, as we've seen in different conversations that you see reflected here, it's very powerful when it works because the students are able to really admit, you know, I, I probably shouldn't have done that. Or I've even heard in a conversation where a young lady said, you know what, I knew you didn't have friends and I should not have, you know, exploited that. And I was like, wow, like it's important that they get that opportunity to hear things face to face when they're not around all their peers and it's just them and the other person and perhaps parents and the other person together. But this is an example of the more restorative practices. Do know that there are still more to come in the future in terms of circle work within the classroom that will support this as well, but we wanted you to see that, to see the difference between this year and last year. Next. Okay, so we wanted to highlight some infractions here and I purposely highlighted the high numbers in each categories. I ended up focusing mostly on white and black because the numbers were more clear to distinguish between. And I wanted to point out a specific fact here. If you notice what the high numbers are for whites in terms of infractions compared to where the high numbers are for student, for a black student. Because oftentimes we have a conversation about why is it that our students of color get caught up into this system and seemingly have a different experience within our system than of, of other students? So we pulled the level two and level three infractions, which typically can lead to in-school or out-of-school suspension. And I want to point out, just as we look in comparison to the types of things, just the categories in which these fall. Because what I want to point out is sometimes there's an unconscious bias or judgment that is made towards certain behaviors. And it's just been something that has been standard throughout schooling in America. So I'm not saying that this is just at Oak Park, but schooling in America, as you look at how we charge these infractions with a consequence. Blacks are in categories that are typically categorized as aggressive or lacking respect for themselves or others. And that tends to garner a harsher consequence in terms of when adults are thinking what has to happen for those students. While if you look at the categories of incidents for the white students, they fall into categories where we feel if we just educated more or we assisted, perhaps there could be some correction for that issue. For example, when you look at a level three for a white student in terms of the cyberbullying and/or their highest number, which is vaping and smoking, that is an area where we have a prevention and wellness coordinator. We want to make sure that we have education for that. We put out bulletins, we put out newsletters. It's an area which we don't look at it as being, like we want to help versus the high number, which is for a black student, which is a level two active defiance. It's not even fighting, it's active defiance. And then it moves to gross misconduct, which again is also a higher number for the whites, but on a different level. But active defiance is seen as outrageous, like we cannot allow that. This, this is something serious. And I think they're all serious, but I think that there are sometimes unconscious bias and judgment that goes along with how we charge these. And I'm not saying just in the minds of deans, I'm saying in the minds of us as, as people in America. Next slide. This was just 2018 that I put in there for comparison so that you could see the numbers for 2018 in terms of comparison reasons as to what's high. Maybe not the same numbers, but still showing high numbers in those same areas that were highlighted before in the other slide.
Um, Linda.
Yep.
Sorry, we were going to talk about just teasing out the gross misconducts
Oh, that's right.
Between the races. If you could go back to slide 16.
Yes, that's it.
So the gross misconduct category is kind of that category where the incident is not one that can be easily described. That's not something that's already listed. It sometimes will contain things that are listed in the list of infractions, but there's something special about it or may have happened multiple times. And so we thought it would be beneficial to kind of tease out what the gross misconducts look like between the two races, between black and white students. And what we found was that white students who were involved in gross misconducts typically had things also related to stuff that was done on social media, drugs, vaping related. Whereas black kids, their involvement that resulted in a gross misconduct, many, many times related to some type of verbal abuse with staff, which goes to Linda's comment about just the act of defiance and interactions with staff and more disrespect, hall wandering, that kind of thing. And then some of those that involve some physical acts of aggression. And so that kind of also speaks to just how we feel about these things. And each kid and each type of kid may have a certain way that we react to things. We have repeatedly seen black kids having higher numbers in categories pertaining to aggressive behaviors. And so as a, as an institution, I think that we need to look at that in terms of the way that say a black kid might react to a conflict versus maybe a white kid who may do something not physically aggressive, but emotionally aggressive, such as getting online and bullying someone. I think we as an institution have got to look at that piece. We, we feel less comfortable when it's a physical act of aggression, but it could be just a trauma, it could be a number of reasons why kids tend to react that way. And so it would do us good to better explore that kind of thing because that's a particular one that we see an increase, a higher number in every year.
Thank you, Janelle. You can advance two slides, Chris, to what the data tells us. Okay? And then, so what we're looking at in terms of the data and what it tells us, our numbers from this year, from last year to this year, really did stay relatively flat, but our response to those things that caused those numbers has shifted. I do want to point out that we have an inviably low rate of misconduct. I mean, like less than 7%. And that's something to, to, to focus on as well as we're looking at how many students actually interact in this system at all. More restorative practices were used, but we still have to look at some different things that we did with our supportive learning environment that we are experiencing and showed us the following. We definitely want to look into changing our tardy detention policy. We already saw that increasing the number that gets you to a detention resulted in a 24% drop in the, in the failure to serve infractions. But we also want to do something to actually curb that behavior of the tardiness as opposed to just giving a, a larger net to catch students from falling. The growth of our culture of warmth, we've had much, much feedback from adults and students alike that they feel a difference in the building. We've also had students who come back from previous, from last year and who've stopped even in my office and said, it just feels different around here. And that was something we were very proud of because we saw everyone, every adult trying to make an effort to form relationships with students and use those relationships to actually work with students to educate them on rights and wrongs. At the very base of what we do at school, we are educators. And so our purpose is to help students increase their knowledge of different things because I want to let you know that students don't just fight to fight. They have been taught that it's okay. And sometimes we are reshaping behavior so that they understand that's not the only way to resolve a conflict. The same thing with social media. Like it doesn't matter that the world may think that putting a comment online is the way that you get to someone. get to someone. We don't have to do that. We have conversations that we can do and forming relationships with individuals so that we can use our words to positively change a conflict. And we're intentionally using and documenting our restorative practices within the building to be not only reactive, because on the discipline side, we are typically reacting to something that has happened, but also proactively, which starts in our classrooms, starts in our hallways, starts at our doors, when students are greeted, making them feel as though they are part of a community. And they want to then make sure that their community is a positive one and they want to positively impact that community as well. So the strategic plan work in the building is what we're attributing some of our data shifts to as well. Next slide. And then we're looking ahead to where we're headed. So, we did put this as an indisputable fact. There is a clear delineation between the races at our school. And I wanted to point out that it's not just that our school, when I mention that these are trends across America, like, these are things that everyone is fighting with in terms of changing mindset around how we judge certain behaviors as bad or intolerable versus behaviors that we see as, we want to educate, we want to save, we want to help change that for the, the student and the individual. It is a matter of racial equity and we're going to have to unpack that in the near future. Not in a way where we feel offended by it being pointed out, but because we want to do better and we want to make sure that we are questioning each other in an appropriate way in order to make sure that what we're doing is right. So, there is no one person who makes the one judgment and one decision. It's all of us coming to the table and asking those hard questions. I've sat at PSS meetings where I've had to talk to teams who were just certain that a certain consequence should happen. And I would have to say, for sure, though, like, and actually unpack. And I mean, it gets heated sometimes, but that's what's necessary because we are advocating for children and we're trying to teach children to do so. But I do want to draw attention to the fact that, as I said earlier, we have people in place to help on certain issues like substance abuse. And making sure the students understand the, the ills of, of using substances like vaping or other illegal substances. But what have we done for trauma or anger management and conflict resolution and understanding a student's circumstances that might lead them to having these concerns so that we can help them to move past where they are with those? I think that's a very important question that we're going to have to make sure that we're addressing as we go forward in the future as well. Because I think all of these need a, a point of assistance in turning around. Go ahead, Janelle.
No, I was just going to add just the, kind of an illustration of what you just said is the fact that we, we staff a person, a prevention and wellness coordinator, whose job is to help educate kids about substance abuse because we feel like that is a very important need and a big problem. But so is the aggressive behaviors and the conflict issues that we have. More work could be done in that, in that area.
Thanks, Janelle. And then the last slide. So, questions as we go forward and we're absorbing this, okay? Because there are more questions that we can ask ourselves and there's more work to be done. I never want to think we're at a finish line. So even at less than seven percent, yes, we can still do better and yes, we can still do more and we're going to. How do we do that? We have to know who our students are. All of them. Even though there are 3,400 of them, we have to. We have to use this data to inform our practices and help students. And we have to know what our true understanding of an infraction is that's being committed and dig deeper than just the act and look into the history and psychology behind the choices students are making. These infractions that we're dealing with are not new, like, students have fought in the past. I mean, I'm in years past, like, in high school, I remember that there were people who fought. And substance use is not new, though different substances come our way. But our responses to them can be different. Our restorative practices allow us to provide education and skill building through these conversations, but it takes time. And I think that's what everyone has to be patient with. And it looks different. So, I've noticed in this restorative work that everyone is on board with it until it's their own child. And then sometimes it's like, then I want to know why you're not throwing the book at them. And I want people to know that restorative practices is the book. We, we are working to reshape the behavior because this is something that through nurture, they have acquired a way of thinking and behaving. And ultimately, we are trying to reshape their choices. But we have to be patient and we all have to be willing to work on that same page and not to draw back to what we were told in the past. One of the things I've highlighted with the deans is, why is 10, or why was 10 the magic number of out-of-school suspensions back in the day? Like, who said 10 was the one that made everything right? Why was three? Why was five? Like, we really have to examine what those numbers even meant from the get-go and decide if they really hold the weight that we thought they would. And that is what you're going to see coming soon. Our code of conduct is being reshaped in collaboration to more of a behavior education plan. So that we are working with students in a different way and even changing the mindset of how we look at that book. So that we understand that education is the goal behind all of the behavior that we're addressing in our building.
And something else that we want to be preparing for as we are doing this work is the pushback that comes with adjusting how we react to what people consider to be those really, really bad acts. And where in previous years, they may have been a part of a no tolerance, a zero tolerance policy, where a kid would have gotten expelled or gotten all 10 of those days. That, that's going to look, and has already begun to look very different this year and as we move forward. And the support behind those decisions will be needed when someone comes to the table and says, hey, this really, really bad thing was done. And why did you all give such a lenient consequence? And that is really when the rubber hits the road in terms of how we truly feel about our desire to educate and restore versus be more punitive.
And that concludes the presentation. We can definitely take questions if there's time for that. I don't know if that's where we wrap, but that's our last slide.
This is time for questions.
Okay.
Are there questions?
Hey, this is Gina. I do have a question. Thank you. First of all, thank you for the report. There's a lot of things that you said, Linda, that just right on the money about like what it's going to take to actually have that shift really take place and, and the investment of the community and understanding what it looks like when you do this differently. So I appreciate that. I had some questions about your slide about the OSS to ISS data. If we could just go back to that slide for a moment.
Do you happen to have a number?
I don't actually.
Is it the one with the day served? That's 14, 14.
Got it.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Chris. So, the question that I have is like, it's the determination of whether a student goes into in-school suspension or out-of-school suspension? How is that decision made? Is that made, is that a team decision? Is that a, is it just strictly by the handbook? I know that, like, we're going to be talking about code of conduct, but like, how are those, how are those decisions made?
That is typically anytime a student commits an act that could result in some kind of suspension. For the most part, the deans collaborate together on that decision.
And I will point us back to slide five as well because in that collaboration, it has changed even amongst the deans as we examine that SB 100 thought of who is this student and what is their history? And would that student's continuing presence pose any one of these things to happen? And that is something that's at, in consideration at that table when they're discussing.
We have tried our best to be, to work as collaboratively as possible so that a child can expect a different consequence depending on which dean they happen to be assigned to. And so, we spend a lot of time talking as a group and deciding as a group on cases that will result in some kind of removal from class.
Thank you. I just realized, like, we don't, I can't see Jackie, so I don't know if she called on me or not.
So.
I'm sorry. I did.
Okay, thank you. I have, I have two more questions, actually, if that's okay. The infractions numbers, can you go back to the infractions? I don't know what page that was. Infractions, hold on, it's like the title of it.
Yeah, which?
Not the one versus OPRF response. Students with infractions by frequency.
Okay, that's number 12.
Yeah. I'm still noticing that those numbers are still up year on year. Right, like, there's, we're, we're still moving in an upward direction right now. And I, is according to this, anyway, those numbers are up. Although I appreciate that 93%. What I'm curious about is how, how is, how is this being targeted to actually get those numbers down?
And I, if I'm not mistaken, Janelle, we were speaking earlier about the spike in vaping.
Vaping, vaping.
Yep. So can you talk a little bit about that occurrence that's happening and how that's affecting this number? And then I can talk about what we've done too in terms of working to, to counter it.
Okay. So, give me just one second. So, if you go just between 18 and 19, the vaping and smoking is that, was that 27? And it was at 40 for first semester of this school year? That is one increase. And then, let me one second. The... That's the one that for us stands out the most because we feel like we are dealing with vaping almost every day. Or something related to some type of substance-related offense, but in particular vaping.
And while Janelle looks for the other, I'm going to just explain in terms of that, the conversation I've had with Ginger, who is our wellness and prevention coordinator. Just in the fact of as we're working on education and broad, making it more broad and sending more things out to parents to help. The thing that I'm bringing up is that once you get to the point that you have to, or you feel you have to vape in school, we may be moving past just wanting to do something and more of an addiction to doing it. In which case, education has to shift in that way in order to work with students on how to change that. Because it's, it's very concerning that we would have students who would be within the building doing that. Given the consequences to it, given the, what, what they're actually putting in their bodies, the concerns we have about the tobacco and all of it. So, do know that our education on that is changing and part of our in-school reflection, it includes an education part for students who are there due to a vaping incident. So that we are educating on this and spreading the word even for students in there who are not in there for vaping, so that we can get the word out through their peers and through one another about the concerns we're having around that, that issue. But I, I'm concerned about it moving past just being an idle social thing to being something that their body is now craving and addicting. And we're putting articles out about how quickly that happens with vaping.
And there also is an increase in the numbers pertaining to aggressive acts. If you look at the batteries between 2018, where there were, there is a total of three and there's a total of 10 for 2019, and also aggressive physical behavior. There is a significant increase there. The...
And Janelle, can you give an idea of what a battery would be so that?
So a battery is, is when someone is hit unprovoked. There is no fight, there is nothing leading up to it. It's just somebody that walks up to another person and strikes them in a serious way.
Thank you.
And so, there, there is an increase there. And so, those are just a couple of categories where we can see an increase from last year to this year. Which, you know, the aggression and the, the batteries and the conflict-related things, I think, speak to just our need to do more in our focus with helping kids work through conflicts and learning more conflict resolution skills. Hopefully, this is something that we can infuse into our advisories. And with the work that we're doing with our social workers. Linda, I don't know if you wanted to mention the specific work that our social workers are going to be doing around particular acts that result in suspensions and really targeting particular behaviors like conflict and aggression and how kids are responding to it?
Yes, I can definitely say that. Because I do want to also point out to the board that I don't believe we've had a single expulsion case come to presentation this year. Which I don't believe was the same as last year. And I say that to say, the process within the support services in terms of making sure that we are embracing a student around what has occurred, has changed. So, every student gets a support plan if they are assigned an ISS or an OSS. What that support plan is, with their social worker, they're actually putting together a plan of how they will continue to meet beyond the days of once they have served their consequence to discuss the behavior in specific and reshaping the behavior. So in the past, there has been conversation, but it's always about reintegrating a student into the academic environment. This is a focus on, if you had a fight, what happened? And how, like, what gets you to the point where you get angry enough to do that? Let's unpack that. So, that work is being done with social workers on a continual basis after. And it's for a certain number of times. So it doesn't go on for a year or anything. There's a set number of meetings that are had based upon what the social worker deems necessary given the students' need to unpack it. But I do want you to know that that's happening to kind of get students to think a little bit more about what their act did. And that's along the lines of this restorative work to understanding the harm that was caused. So we do take the fact that we see that number is higher and we are doing some work to see if we can reverse that.
And one last one that has a significant increase is the violation of MCC. And that is kids who are caught sneaking out of the building. We have increased our outdoor patrols this year. We have a security person that drives around the perimeter of the school all day. And there is a concentration during the lunch periods because we were having so many kids leaving. And so that, it was showing one last year, first semester, and 17 this year because of that very specific effort that we have put towards stopping kids from leaving the building when they should not be.
Thank you. You know what? I think you answered my questions. Thanks.
Thank you.
I had a couple of questions. First of all, thank you for the information and it's always, you know, that 93% is something that I think holds pretty fairly steady in the last few years, anyway, of infractions for our students. I, I'm trying to understand how we're looking at, we didn't talk a lot about the, the tardies and... we didn't talk a lot about the, the tardies and the failure to serve detentions, which has always been the highest level of infractions. And in the last couple of years, I know in CCB as well as board discussions that we talked about that second through eighth period. And I was hoping to understand how we're with restorative practices and, you know, the whole idea of cultural warmth and our teachers. What's, what's the classroom aspect of this, you know, work even for the, and I'm sure we can talk more about it when we look at the code of conduct. And Linda, to your point about the subjective, in my mind, infractions that have to do, and you talked about where it's, in some instances, a feeling of a lack of respect versus things like vaping or drug use or, you know, social media harassment and bullying. So, I, that's a whole discussion, I think, in terms of how we're trying to look at mindsets. But I do want to understand the, there wasn't data about these, which of these infractions are in the classroom? Because it's, the, the discussion was centered around the, the PSS teams. So, it's hard to understand what's happening in the classroom and how that relates to, you know, students losing instructional time.
Very good point. I will say you hit the nail on the head when you said it's gonna be a very big part of the code of conduct. Reshift, because there's going to be some increased responsibilities on a lot of fronts in just how we are interacting with students, how we are working to shift those behaviors as they come into the classroom, how we're recording that information with fidelity across all classes. I think the one thing we want to focus on, on a systemic end, is trying to improve our hero system, which was causing an issue of making it difficult within the classroom, as teachers would report to making that, making it worth the effort, if I could say. And I think once we do that systemically with a different system, we will be able to then hone in on exactly what's happening room to room in terms of recording of this information, handling of this information, and what we're doing to kind of reverse that trend. Janelle, did you want to add as well?
Yeah, I would just add, first echoing, we do not currently have a notation that easily says this happened in a classroom and this did not. However, I do think that we can look at the level system that's currently in place. Typically, typically, I'm not saying always, but typically, the things that occur in Level 3 typically are not happening in the classroom. That is not to say that a fight can't happen in a classroom. That's just not where we see most of them happening. I'm using that one as an example. More the act of defiance, some of those are things that might happen in a classroom more so than some of the other ones. So, I think we can also just look at what the infractions are, but we, we can see if we can add, just, I think it would be easy to add per infraction where it occurs.
Thank you. The only other, I guess, comment or question in terms of understanding the, the data is the, you know, when you talk about active defiance, or, you know, the other, I can't, I'm blanking on the category that tends to be very subjective, and when you say that, you know, changing the hero system, but how are we changing, what's happening in terms of changing mindset or what training? Because just, I mean, changing the code of conduct, meaning that students may have a different consequence, doesn't necessarily change relationships or change how adults are interacting with our students. And it, this feels very student responsibility here right now in terms of them understanding what they've done wrong and changing their, you know, we had talked about, and I'm gonna go back to the tardies and failure to serve detentions, that second through eighth period, as well as some of the things you talked about, you know, the defiance. How are we, we?
I know.
Training our adults to and things that you're talking about, and so it's not just changing the behavior or the consequence, but getting to a level of understanding so that they're, we're doing more preventative work.
I understand exactly what you're saying. I'm sorry, Janelle, if you want to go first. I, I understand what she's saying, and I have an answer for that, too. Go ahead.
Yep, and so I, I think I know what part of the answer you're gonna give, and I would just like to speak anecdotally on actual work that we've been doing. We certainly started off the school year with the culture of warmth, which Linda, I know you'll talk about, and letting teachers know about our desire to build more relationships and deepen the relationships that we have with kids and making our classrooms feel more like a family and a community. And letting them know that responses to discipline issues will look different. And some anecdotal pieces of information include, I had a girl who called her teacher a B, and that usually would have resulted, I mean, she looked right at her and the girl said, you know, the teacher said, "How was your day going?", and she said, "Well, it was going better before you did A, B, and C, B." And that is something that typically would have resulted in a punitive consequence, typically in-school suspension, along with a restorative conversation with the teacher to try to improve that relationship. And the mindset shift was, we had a conversation that was not hard for this, that was not easy, excuse me, for the student to be a part of with the teacher, but we had a really, really restorative conversation with the two to restore that relationship, and it did not result in the typical in-school suspension that everyone was used to both issuing and for students to be receiving. And that took some work, and that is an example of the kinds of conversations that we are having with teachers where, as deans, we are saying, "Now, I need you to know that this consequence and this reaction is gonna look different than what you may have been used to, and let me explain why." And so we are having true conversations with teachers when it happens, but we begun, we began the year with, things are going to look different as we work to establish this culture of warmth. And so I can say that I have been a part of conversations where that, those direct things are said to teachers, and they aren't always met with, you know, applause, but I do think that, that they see our intentions, and it has, I think that it has been working.
And then I'm gonna add one piece, because I get what you're saying, Jackie, in terms of it being on a broader scale. Like, even if there's no incident that's happening, and I'm going to put a need out on the table, because I don't necessarily have an answer for it yet, but I definitely believe that there, we need to have some type of trauma-informed PD training and so that people can begin to understand that the students who come to us do not come just as blank slates, always ready to learn, but they sometimes come with circumstances that have made life very difficult, and that walking in the door sometimes was like that last thing they were able to do for the day, and when it is met with an unintentional re, interaction, like, and when I say unintentional, I don't, everyone has best intentions in mind as they're having the conversations. But just like everything in life, we get to moving, we get to working, and you're just doing things sometimes automatic. And it touches a button that changes the direction in which that student was going. And until we have more of a handle on what student circumstances sometimes can be and are within our community, we're not gonna have that sensitivity. We're going to take an affront to it because it's happening to us in that moment. Instead of, one of the things that I emphasize with the culture of warmth is, don't take it personal. Like, most times, it was not intended that you would be, like, the kid's not attacking you, they're having a moment, they're having a day. That's still a moment in which we need to educate. But that goes back to those universal mind shifts, you know, changes, because as adults, and if we think about it, all of us have this respect meter where we're like, you know, and what we do beyond that point is what we're trying to address in that. So, do know with that code of conduct work reshaping, it's going to flow along with that so that we have a way of making sure that teachers are ready. Because these are conversations we have to have, and if nothing else, we have to become listeners, even in a moment where it's difficult to do so. And it doesn't mean that you don't end that moment of listening by, by getting some assistance and letting that student know, you know, "I'm gonna have somebody else help you here", but our reaction to those things can change an interaction completely. But we have to be able to think in those moments, and we have to be able to, to listen to what's happening and not take it personally. And, and do know that the culture of warmth started everything off, because in the beginning, we weren't even warm and friendly in the hall, like, and we've improved that. So, we had to start there so that then we could branch out and start other relationships with our peers, colleagues, and our students.
And, and I just will end, because I know where our time is moving on here, that we have to, you know, the, the issues of bias and anti-bias training and understanding cultural differences and bringing our racial equity into this conversation, because I, it's not, as you said, it's across, it's not happenstance that the predominance of those infractions are being meted out to, to Black students. So, that is suggesting that it is, you know, asking someone to step, we have to take their perspective. We also, you know, we've been doing the, our racial equity, you know, courageous conversations for a very long time now, and we're still having the same conversation. And so that's why I, you know, I appreciate and I fully understand and respect and agree with trauma-informed practices. But I'm trying to understand how we intentional look at what's happening in terms of how our Black students and Brown students are, are being perceived and the reactions they're getting.
And, and I, I'm gonna.
Just, that's how, you know, I know there's no solution to that right now, but I, I do, I think that we see this report every year, and we're, the work that you're doing, you know, is, is definitely right on target. Just, I'm waiting for us to, to be able to have that reflected in how our students talk about their experiences.
It makes perfect sense, and, and definitely just the response to actions, so I understand what you're, what you're saying there.
If I may jump in here, I appreciate the presentation and overview. And Linda, you said something just a few minutes ago that came, this might build on it a little bit. And that's, over the last year to year and a half, there have been a few times, at least twice, that I can recall, where during the restorative practice process, I've heard where there's a perception by the people who were aggrieved in some way, that the person who did something to cause pain or upset, that they were questioning whether that individual was genuinely contrite. And every time I've heard that, it's really caused me great concern. Because as we all know, people respond outwardly very differently, and it's hard to know what's going on inside, especially when it comes to teenagers who are at varying levels of maturity and emotional development. And so, I realize our time is short here, but I just wanted to bring that concern to, at this point. I feel like this may be relevant, because I, I know it's happened with regards to at least one, if not a few students, and also on a different level within the building. And anyway, so I'll just pause there, but I just, if there is some expert insight that at some point someone could share with me, but I just feel like the people who are still hurting sometimes can cause the process to go sideways because they don't want restoration to happen yet. They're still in the punitive mode. And so I'm just hopeful that a lot of this will, over time, that we'll all get better at that individually and collectively.
Thank you for that, and, and that is definitely a part of that process. We usually do not put students together until we're certain that the aggressor can have that conversation with empathy, but then also to understand that they're going to be processing what they're hearing from the person that they aggressed upon and receiving that information from that individual, which is a unique situation for them to be in, and sometimes causes unease, where they may not visually show things because of embarrassment, shame, feelings of discomfort, the way you would think they would. But I always tell adults, it's very important that we, we cannot start these conversations with, "You're gonna have to say you're sorry", because that's not restorative work. The student arrives there through the work that is done to processing the harm that was caused. And then it's because that student understands that they're able to sit in that room with the person it happened to in order to get that out. It's not supposed to be a back and forth about what happened. It's a, "I'm letting you know that I was scarred by this. You already know that because you were processing, but now you're hearing it from me." So, that is a process that has to be developed as well, as we go through, but I appreciate your pointing that out.
And, and it also goes on the other side as well, the person who was harmed, being willing and ready to sit in a room with the person who did the harm. And we, we, we do, we do not force that if both parties are not ready and we don't feel that, that experience will be productive for both. But we don't let one side's lack of readiness halt our work at trying to restore the harm and use it as a teachable moment.
Thank you.
And I think that's, that's all. I don't know.
If there are no other questions? Thank you ladies so much. Good report.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity, and I.
Thank you.
Having the conversation more later.
Thank you.
So, our next item, as we move into the finance section, is the Northern Illinois Independent Purchasing Cooperative Beverage and Equipment Products Contract. Making the presentation is Micheline Prokowsky, Director Food Service. And I just want to say that, as a side note, the food service department has served over 46,000 meals since the COVID, COVID-19. I just want to say that. Back to the item, Oak Park and River Forest High School is the administrative district for the Northern Illinois Independent Purchasing Cooperative. On March 31st, the RFPs were solicited, coming forth with the summary of findings and a recommendation for where we move forward with regards to the process. As I said, it's Micheline Prokowsky. At the conclusion of her presentation, the recommendation is for the committee of the whole to move the beverage and equipment products contract awarded to Great Lakes Coca-Cola Division LLC and move forward to the Board of Education for approval at the April 23rd board meeting. By accepting this RFP, the district will be saving $12,646.80, which is a 5% savings. This item is in compliance with Priority Four, Facilities, Operations, and Finance. As a strategic plan and District Policy 4:60. Mike?
Yes, thank you. This is the first time that we, as a co-op, went a bit on beverages, something we'd never done before, and a couple of us directors were discussing how Um, something we'd never done before, and a couple of us directors were discussing how our goal is always to get the best product at the lowest cost, and we thought if we could combine our usage that we would get better pricing. So we put it out to the whole co-op, three of us, uh, three districts, which was um, Oak Park District two eleven and um, uh, River, uh, Fox River Elementary District was the third one. Have joined together with our usage and um, as you can see, the prices are much better. Um, uh, Coca-Cola is much lower than Pepsi and compared to what we're paying as of right now, the price is even lower for next year. So we would move to um, accept the Coca-Cola, to move it to the um, Board of Ed on uh, to accept the Coke bid. Is there any questions?
Quick question. The savings is for, it's for the co-op as a whole or just our district?
No, that was the bottom line of the bid, correct, but in essence, it will be a five percent savings for us.
Are there any other questions? Thank you, Mike. Uh, the next item is the Food Service Intergovernmental Agreement with District Ninety-seven for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year. As you know, we are the vendor for District Ninety-seven's Breakfast and Lunch Program. Uh, this, we're coming forward with the presentation for next year. The recommendation would be for the committee at the next board meeting to extend one year in the intergovernmental agreement between Oak Park River Forest High School District and District Ninety-seven for the provision of freshly-prepared meals for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year and move that forward to the board at the April twenty-third board meeting. Um, this item is in compliance with Strategic Plan Priority Four, Facilities, Operations, and Finance, and District Policy one colon twenty. Mike?
Yes, um, yes. Okay, as you can see in the thing, we have been in, uh, we have been doing uh, District Ninety-seven's lunches since two thousand and seven. It's been very successful, and we just need to roll over agreement for next year. So we move it out, we would like to have it approved so it could move on to the board for approval on April twenty-third.
Are there any questions?
In terms, yes, question, in terms of rolling over, is there anything in it that, you know, in terms of the rates, everything is the same, I take it, correct?
Correct, Tom. We did not need to raise the prices this year. I wanted to do, I'll be honest, I wanted to do a three-year. But they wouldn't do it because I said in, if we did the three-year, we would negotiate each year, but they didn't want to sign for that. So I said, okay, we'll roll over for one year. And then we'll discuss next year, and if I have to raise next year, then we'll raise, and then we'll go for another intergovernmental, another rollover to the intergovernmental agreement.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
I just want to say thank you to Mike and all the food service staff for all of your hard and courageous work. It is greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. I've got a great team, great team.
Okay, the next item under finance is being presented by uh, Chief School Business Official Cindy Sador. It's the Driver's Aid Behind the Will Student Fee Increase. This, uh, the next step will be to take this forward to the Board of Education. Uh, at the April twenty-third board meeting, we will post the notice in the Wester Journal on the morning of April fifteenth. This item is in compliance with Strategic Plan Priority Four, Facilities, Operations, and Finance, and School, School Code One oh five ILCS five, that, five twenty-seven, twenty-four point two, twenty-three, Illinois Admin Code two fifty-two point three oh eight three. Cindy?
Thank you, Dr. Pruitt Adams. So this is, we we had spoken about the driver's ed fees, and the board had approved in February to go ahead and increase the fee to two fifty, excuse me. We needed to do a resolution for this, um, so we have to have a hearing and also put it in the paper. We ran them, we were running this and also a waiver because there's a waiver that will be right after this. So this is why we waited to do the resolution till this time. But we also needed the, if the board did not approve it, there was no need to go through the cost of putting it in a paper. And the outline is just the outline and the uh, timing of when all this needs to happen. Are there any questions?
Questions? Okay, let's move on. Thank you.
You're welcome.
The next item is, let me blow it up here. Uh, is the renewal of application for modification of driver's ed fee waiver. Uh, this too is in compliance with Strategic Plan Priority uh, Four and the school, Illinois School Code. Cindy?
Thank you again. So this is um, this is to include our salaries and our benefits when we're doing the calculation. This is a renewal. Five years ago, this was actually approved and was sent to the state. So all we're doing here is just uh, a renewal. This is an outline again of what we need to do. We need to have the hearing for it. So we will run both of the hearings uh, at the board meeting next week. Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item, which is the uh, twenty-twenty Project One Environmental Abatement Contract is being pulled until after board discussion for next week. And the next item is the presentation of the board budget for the twenty-twenty-one school year. This is in compliance with Strategic Plan Priority Four. Mr. Door?
Um, thank you again. So this is uh, the board's budget. This is actually your budget that you guys have. Um, what you have is you have a decrease of uh, um, three point six and or thirteen thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars. This is normally something that the board discusses, and uh, Gail has put this together for you guys. So is there any questions or discussions you guys want to have?
Questions?
I just had one question. I'm not sure, I I didn't um, pose it till this afternoon to Gail, so maybe the answer's not ready yet, but um, I noticed that the video uh, videoing of our meetings. Um, if I'm not mistaken, I have it written for me right now. Was it, is it going down this coming year? And I'm wondering what the money goes towards and how it's going down. Uh, maybe it's because we're doing this Zoom stuff.
Um, I I know it's it's done by a stipend that's being paid. Um, and currently what, um, when we looked at it, we looked at what account number it was being put into uh, as the stipend this year. This year, the stipend is being put into uh, the person's regular salaried account. Um, which it really should not be in there, so we'll probably be moving that out for the next year and probably doing a journal entry to reclass it for this year. As far as it going down, I don't, um, I didn't, I I can't see, I'm sorry. Chris, can you move this up a little bit?
We're asking for less money for next year.
Yeah. I think it's from a thousand to five hundred now.
Yeah, that that I would, I'm not, let's see, keep going. Where's it at?
It's going from one thousand down to five hundred.
Thank you.
And I'm trying to remember why that changed. Probably because of this, how we're finishing out the year.
I I believe that is correct.
That's been amended to that. And the same thing with Protec Sound. That's the group we would have that would come in and record the collaboration for early childhood. But we're not meeting now, so we don't know what to put in there for next year. To be exact, the exact amount.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Okay.
I see, it says that there was in the in the food section, um, for safe. And there is, is that students advocating for equity, and why is there nothing for next year?
Because they are now an officially sponsored group, and so there's money that they get through the club's program that pays for that now.
Thank you.
Any others?
There's no other questions. We can move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
The, that concludes all of the items for discussion tonight. We're now in, that's turning it back over to Dr. Moore for future agenda items.
And I will ask if anyone has a future agenda item.
We have one for next week.
Yes.
Um, the COVID nineteen potential financial impact on the district.
Very timely.
Yes, so that's for next week.
Yeah, and um, we had also talked about, I'm not sure, I haven't uh, looked recently at the agenda, but also just an update on
E-learning.
Remote learning and E-learning.
That's next week as well.
Okay. Anyone else have anything? Then I will move to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, why don't we take uh, five minutes or seven minutes?
And we're to go to a different link, correct?
We open this, we open, I was told we open the session in the same link.
Okay.
Then we go out and go to a different link for closed session.
Okay, so we can just stay on right now.
Right.
So do we want to just keep going?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, if if we think we can do it pretty quickly, if it's twenty, thirty minutes or less, is that the forecast?
I hope so.
Okay.
Well, what we can do is we can finish this up and then take a break before we go into closed session.
There you go.
Okay, so the seven minutes will start after we
Sounds good.
All right. So we've adjourned and I'm trying to get to my other agenda. And Gail, just tell me when you're ready.
I'm ready.
Okay, so I call to order the special board, virtual board meeting of OPRF HS on Tuesday, April fourteenth at eight thirteen PM and ask for roll call.
Ms. Prokowski?
Here.
Ms. Byvy?
Here.
Mr. Barron?
Here.
Mr. Isley?
Here.
Mr. Martyry?
Here.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
And Dr. Moore?
Here. And any public comments?
I have received none.
Okay. So uh, now I move to enter closed session for the purpose of discussing collective negotiating matters between the district and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees and ask for a second.
Second.
I'm sorry, who was that?
Uh, I think I I got that one, Matt. It's Martyry.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. Ms. Byvy?
Yes.
Mr. Barron?
Yes.
Mr. Isley?
No.
Mr. Martyry?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Prokowski?
Yes.
And Dr. Moore?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now reconvene, close session at eight twenty PM.
Okay, and for my people, I need Mike, Roxanna, and Cindy.
On the other screen.
Okay, so we, do we, do we all sign off on this one, then go back into a different link?
Yes, in the same email.
Got it. Thanks.